I said it this morning, but I forgot to say. So the only other thing on here was they were over the contract on some days.
Oh, that's a question I had today.
Okay, okay, so I, I, so I brought that up this morning, so. I don't support, you know, having any liquidated damages for their delays or for their extra days that they went over. And the reason I say that is because they did a great job on the project, they did a very quick job on the project. They had a window this long to complete the project and they just got started a little bit, but then it took this long to construct it. They just got started a little bit late and it kind of rolled over. And so the public was not inconvenienced by any extra time that they were out working or anything else. When they came to show up to work, they came to show up to work and they went straight to the project. And so I had conversations with you and it isn't something the city is obligated necessarily to do. And I don't necessarily support the city going down that path just because we've got a quality contractor that did a great job. And we don't want to discourage quality contractors from coming in and being on future projects.
Just for public information, how many days were they over, you know, even though we had these delay of parts? Because I also want to make a comment, they cleaned up every day.
Yes.
They put bottled water to the residents, you know, cases of. We never had one complaint in this building over their lack of work versus a previous contractor or part of the job there, so. I agree with what you're saying, I just want to know how much day, 10 days, 5 days?
It, it was 14 days, I think there was some heavy rain days if you recall, so there's two other days that can be subtracted through there, but 14 out of 14.
Okay, again, I did the job.
They did a great job.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to say that before you made a vote, just in case you wanted to do something different.
All right, so we'll start back, do I have a motion? Second.
My term, my first time down.
And second. Uh, is there any more discussion? All in favor?
No.
All opposed? Motion varies. And once again.
I approve.
Okay, it's fine. Can we just finish this, because this is the last, is that allowable?
Um, I would recommend we do go to the public hearing.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
I was going to go home too.
Okay, so we are recessing this portion of the meeting for a public hearing at 5:30 on the following topics. This will involve city council member, city building official Peterson, a public hearing, discussion only. Consideration and possible approval of appeal by Richard W. Knoll as state representative Aaron Knoll regarding building code violation at 736 Avenue G, Elite Nevada. And upon attorney's suggestion, we will talk with Mr. Knoll and then we will allow our building official to speak. So, Mr. Knoll, if you would like to come up, please say.
Um, I would just like to make the new structure order, so basically you were both, if I could ask for that. Because the structure is UDC 18, uh, 2018. The inspector did not take any measurements, I asked him, can he take some measurements and kind of prove my case to you? And he says, no, everything's wrong and just left. So, I don't really, and also there are numerous projects in town that are a hazard with no type of, are actual hazards. And I would just like the same consideration that is given to everyone else. There's modulars and mobile homes sitting on cinder blocks. And if some kid accidentally bumps his three wheeler into that, he could die by being crushed by an entire building. There's no tape, caution tape, nothing, it's not fenced off. There's several decrepit buildings, um, as George is talking about, one of his buildings was vandalized. But there's several other decrepit buildings that look like they have been broken into. And that's a hazard for the person breaking in. And I don't understand why those people weren't ordered to cut fencing when my project is completely UDC code and he never measured anything.
Okay, second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment concerning this?
Thank you, Mrs. James. Uh, I'm concerned about selective enforcement. The gentleman's project is minor in comparison to what you have violation across the city. Any setbacks that he has, most of them are grandfathered in. The only thing that is really a big issue is that they're leaning to or whatever you want to call it. And that's nothing. He built up a tract of, uh, a home, put on cinder blocks, integrate apart, doesn't meet the setbacks. Is it a problem? It's not even fenced off. All construction must be fenced off prior to completion, not doing that. We can let that slide, why are we worried about who we're leaning to? I'm concerned also in regards to, uh, I'm going back to 2020, Kansas Home Solutions uh, was remodeling three different homes, no business license. Permit was issued in eight, on 817 2020, well, 450, uh, Fifth Street, 648 Murray Street, 1381 Mel Street. Ramsey Construction was supposedly put at, I mean, put all of the permit, that's the name that was on there, on 817 2020. However, he purchased his business license on July of 2021. Only one home was finished, that was 450 Fifth Street, by what appears to have been done by a contractor without a proper city business license. The work on all of the homes was done by Sean Scott, stepson of Ramsey, who is not licensed. Selective enforcement's got to stop. Big things we need to address, small things like Mr. Knoll, that's nothing. Also, 318 Ely Avenue, within 100 feet of, uh, a person that sits on the regional planning commission. Sean Scott worked on it, no permit, never finished it. I get to see, uh, a certificate of occupancy, yet you have a family living in there. That's half finished. Half finished, and now we're worried about Mr. Knoll? I want to remind you, not remind you because you folks weren't at the RTC meeting, but there was a bigger resident that was allowed to change his zoning from residential to commercial. And he had changed his zoning because it was cheap for him to do the work without hiring a contractor. So he did that work and then came back and asked for commercial zoning. Had he had the project inspected by the building inspector, I wouldn't have a problem. But he didn't, and he said in a public meeting, I did that because it was less expensive. Mr. Knoll's problem is nothing.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Three minutes, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Selective enforcement's got to stop, man.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you give our permission?
Yes.
Good, good, thank you. Uh, so I, you'll see in your packet, there's a little itinerary of what I was going to discuss today, along with some supporting documents.
Which item did you have?
We're still on the same level.
Number seven still?
Yeah.
I think you started.
And, um, you know, for, for paper safe, I didn't print off a couple pages twice, so it kind of directs you to flip back and forth. I can give you the small gist of all the information that I'm presenting is in the code. Some of it's a little tough for me with the print offs, but I'm happy to summarize anything. If I go to fast through one piece, like, you know, I'm happy to stop, reverse, plan anything, uh, whatever you guys need from me, I'm happy to help, so. I'm just going to dive into the itinerary that I put together. Um, and for starters, um, I do not legally, um, I can't legally issue a permit on this project. Uh, reason one, it does not qualify for owner builder exception per NRS 624.031. Now, that requires us that, it says a homeowner can do work on their own home as long as they own the home and they live in the home, they don't intend to sell or lease that home. Uh, Mr. Knoll is not the homeowner, uh, he does live there, uh, but the home is currently for sale and for lease. So he wouldn't qualify for the exemption that the state contractor board has put forward to allow me to grant him a permit. Those are rules that I'm bound by. Um, the, the, number two, it exceeds the third group of rear yard coverage for accessory structures specified in ordinance, uh, which could, could be weighed through a variance, but that process needs to be completed before a building permit would be allowed to be issued. Uh, now, I, I could issue a building permit to a contractor on this, uh, with some specific engineering company, so. It's not completely exempt from ever getting permits, it's just these are some requirements that we need to meet before we can get to issuing it. Um, so it appears to not meet the required side, uh, yard setback of five feet. Uh, again, I absolutely stipulate, I didn't get a chance to pull much tape on this thing. Uh, it was a pretty hairy situation, uh, we, Mr. Knoll didn't end up being best friends at the end of this, uh, so I'll just put it lightly and say that I certainly didn't feel comfortable sticking around and conducting a thorough investigation. But to be honest, I've done this long enough where I can pick up quite a few things that the tenants know, so. So, so that would be one that would also need to be addressed in a variance. Uh, number four is a lax required footings and does not meet any of the provided exceptions found in National Standards Code 2018, pages four through eight. Uh, that states accessory buildings that are freestanding, um, don't have to necessarily meet the cross line. Um, if they're, um, under 600 feet, uh, six, 600 square feet. This wouldn't account for that, this is an extension or addition onto an existing structure that, according to Google Earth, it's roughly around 1,200 feet, so. Uh, we're adding about 300, 250 square feet to a structure that already exists, that's, uh, that's, that's in excess of that 300. So it would require, uh, it would require those frost protective floors. Uh, number five is attached to an engineer's structure, which would require an engineer means an attachment and support. Uh, the building that's attached to is an old metal truss style, um, kind of barn building. Uh, it's not a conventional building, they do find in the building code. Uh, therefore, there is no prescribed means in the building code in order to tell somebody how to positively attach one structure to the structure because it was specifically engineered and it would require an engineer to dictate the terms of that attachment. Uh, number six, a building official is not allowed to waive code requirements, which means that only in situations where code compliance is not practical. I can find that on page 10, uh, that's part of the building code. So if there are site constraints that, that we cannot necessarily meet every facet of the building code, then that's something that we can certainly take into consideration. Uh, the alternative means and methods we'll look to address later. Uh, generally speaking, specifies engineering requirements for anything that's outside of prescribed building code. Um, and then if it was classified as a freestanding structure, which it is not, but that, that was the argument that was made to me when I was there. Um, it would not meet the fire resistant construction requirements on section 4302, uh, and for buildings less than two feet from another structure, pages 11 and 12. And basically that states that if you have two structures that are within five feet of one another, uh, you cannot have any openings in those structures. And then both walls, uh, both adjoining walls on those buildings can, for a period of four feet, need to be fire rated in order to protect one structure from the other. But, uh, to be honest, I would reclassify this as freestanding, it's, it's a need to, it's construction and it's, it's existed, so. So, I'll move on to reasons for a permit is required. Uh, it appears to exceed a maximum of 200 square feet per Google Earth and the accessory site measurement tools. Uh, it has a floor space of around 250 square feet, can be generously measured. And I, I, I measured it, um, in caution, uh, I didn't include roughly two feet that was underneath the overhang of the building. I tried to use the minimal, uh, measurements that I could, uh, based on the pictures that I had obtained and the Google measurements at that point, so. So, number two, does not qualify as a freestanding structure per definition, page 15. Uh, when we don't have a definition that's stipulated in the building code, uh, we are required to go to any of the major dictionaries to, uh, to grab their definition and stuff. So, then obviously the building code cannot define our word, otherwise it would just be a dictionary and, uh, it would be very useful. Um, and contains electrical, so a permit was always, is always required to run electrical in these structures. So, um, those are the reasons that a permit would be required, uh, for this, this project. Now, the reasons is it's a dangerous structure. And before I get into that, I will, uh, I will state that building code is, is kind of something that's, uh, built up over the years based on experiences engineers have going out after disasters, doing after action reports, uh, deciding, you know, what failed, what succeeded, how we can make things better. Uh, so it, it definitely has those engineering redundancies in it. If you are missing one or two items in building code, it doesn't mean the building's going to collapse. I mean, we allow for human error, we allow for things to be missed, we allow for material deficiencies. You know, the redundancy is built into the building code. Um, if, if it were a matter of one or two issues, um, honestly, we really wouldn't be here tonight, so. So, number one is the lack of required footings for frost protection. Again, we're required to get down to 36 inches for cross depth. Um, and/or for accessory freestanding structures under 600 feet, you can do a shallow footing, it has to be a minimum of 12 feet. Uh, so, and then, um, that, that's the only way that you can eliminate frost protection, uh, on these types of structures. So, number two is the lack of braced wall lines per the IRC. Now, the braced wall lines protect the structure from out of plane gravity and seismic loads. Out of plane loads are your, your wind, um, if you've got an imbalance of snow load, uh, that can be an out of plane load in conjunction with these wind loads. That's kind of what we're looking at as far as the varied, uh, the part that I have a biggest problem. The code requires a minimum of 18 inches of braced wall lines on each side of a portal frame structure. And a portal frame is anytime you basically have a large opening, uh, like garage doors, particularly, uh, or may be two openings in this case, would be a portal frame. Uh, and the reason that they have 18 inches on either side is, uh, those are braced wall lines, which means they're sheathed with structural sheathing and that are nailed off at a very prescribed rate. Uh, typically that's, uh, six inches on center and twelve inches in the field for the naming pattern. And that basically protects the building from racking in the event of strong winds, in the event of seismic, in the event of overload of earth stone. So it's very, very critical for the safety of the structure, uh, that those brace lines be adhered to. And there are no alternatives, not to just get in the building code. Uh, they are strictly required unless an engineer were to determine otherwise and provide a detailed, uh, plan that exempts those. Uh, number three, lack of required hold downs. Uh, so the minimum is that end up for bolts, um, any structures can be seven inches. Uh, that's one of those things that was added to the code after the Northridge quake, uh, back in the late eighties because what they found was the minimum embedment length was critical to keeping structures in place when they, when it first started moving. It is a seismic design category, so there is some risk there, it's not an everyday risk, but, you know, you can find out in fall signs. But, uh, seismic design C is about midway in your seismic design category, so. Uh, it's, it's a fairly sizable risk, uh, and even a minimal amount of seismic, uh, activity can be detrimental for this, uh, this project, so. Uh, the header in the front is overspanned, uh, you'll notice on the picture, it appears as if the beam runs all the way across the entire structure. Uh, it does not, that is a base abhor that goes on top of whatever beam it is that's, that's, uh, over the opening itself. So basically the construction of this thing is, um, I've got a couple of jack studs that come up and support beam, and then I've got walls that collapse in on it. And that's, that's where that braced wall line needs to be, is where that connection is made. So basically, I kind of have a pre-fully beam, uh, that's supporting, uh, the, the portal opening itself. Um, let's see. Uh, the header is vastly overspanned, page 20. Uh, anytime you get over roughly about nine feet, uh, dimensional lumber in any capacity is not satisfactory for a building. And it has to be a piece of engineered lumber. Um, I didn't get a solid look at what was there, uh, given the circumstances I was looking at that day, uh, but I, I, I know it wasn't a piece of engineered lumber. I can always tell the microlam or a Goodyear beam, you know, is in danger, so they're very against that. Uh, the header is undersupported, so, um, if you look in the picture, you'll see the two, two studs that rise up to meet the support for that beam. Uh, and then to page two, turn to the graphs, uh, the tables in pages 21, 22, and 23. Uh, they indicate that, uh, two jack studs are required for support of a beam that day, which means, and the jack studs are the ones that are directly underneath the beam itself. And then two king studs are required, and a king stud is a full size side stud that runs from the foundation all the way up to the top of the building itself. So, we've got two jack studs that rise and hold the beam, and then we've got two king studs that go all the way to the top of the building. Now, these king studs are required to be positively attached to not only the beam, but also to the jack studs. And it's a very specific nailing schedule that needs to be adhered to. Uh, the construction, it's an instruction methodology we have in the field, uh, at this point, is essentially a two by four, two by six that's, that's, that's sandwiching in these two jack studs, which aren't connected, which are required to be connected. Because if you notice in the photo, there's a gap between the, uh, the jack studs. They are required to be connected, they're also required to be positively connected, but there's no way that, that it can possibly be code compliant if I don't have full length king studs, uh, that are positively connected to both the beam and the jack studs. So, I also have, uh, number six, the lack of required beam strapping. Uh, anytime you have a beam of this magnitude, a portal opening, uh, coil strapping is required, and that's those little metal straps that you see, they're about two inches wide, they have multiple holes in them. Uh, and they're basically, uh, you nail them to the jack studs and then they wrap over the beam, nail to the beam, basically hold everything together so that, that we don't get any displacement. Number seven, uh, no ledger or beam support on the side bearing against the structure. And this is what concerned me the most, was, was this particular, uh, construction technique, I guess. Uh, the entire roof structure is essentially supported on age plywood. Uh, what we have is a lean two, uh, so on the opening side, the beams, the roof beams rest on that beam that's overspanned and they go into this engineered structure. Well, there's nothing to support the roof of. All these are attached to this plywood that's sheathed on the outside of this, this 30, 40, 50, 60 year old barn building. So I assume they're toe nailed in from the backside and then you use some uplift connectors as opposed to joist hangers for, uh, to help secure them. But essentially, that connection to this engineered structure would either need to be an engineered connection or would have to be a properly sized beam that's supported properly on the backside of the lean two that runs across that supports the roof itself. So, uh, but yeah, essentially, the entire middle of the roof against the existing structure is supported by, by plywood. And that's just absolutely, um, undersupported in every way, shape, and form. Uh, lack of mechanical supports, uh, ledger board for roof joists, uh, which would need to be solidly attached to a properly sized beam, which I essentially just stated. We'd have that beam running across there, then you could bear it on top of that, and there's also a different ledger connection with mechanical connectors that you can hang off the beam to put your roof joists in so that they get that support that they need, but we don't have to do that. Um, and then again, number nine is kind of redundant, uh, does not meet fire rating of the structure within two feet of another. It's classified as a freestanding structure, again, it's not. Um, so I think that's, that point's kind of moved, uh, here at this point. And then legal authority, uh, the scope page, uh, page 25 basically details exactly what, uh, this is scope. So, so that, that basically tells us exactly what the building code, uh, talks about provisions of scope shall apply to construction alteration, movement, enlargement, replacement, repair equipment, occupants, and location removal and demolition, dash ones you could build in townhouses, and accessory structures. So anything basically that we're building is going to be over 200 square feet, that's going to be required, uh, to comply with the code. That is what the scope, uh, handles the notice of orders, is page 26 and 27. And that simply says that the building official shall send out notice of orders in regards to violations of the building code. I'm assuming we all have a copy of the notice of orders that you can use in the packet?
What were you?
The notice order? Correct. Okay. And then page 28 is the required, and that is basically telling us we are required to get a permit anytime we're messing with stuff, it's always a permit store fee that falls under the jurisdiction of the building code, so. Um, and then the limitation page is, um, for the building code or appeals, uh, that's just for building code alone. That doesn't have to do with the, um, actual notice and orders. If you have a problem with notice and orders, you're welcome to rule on that, to ask for changes or, or anything along those lines. But it basically states that, uh, the warrant appeals does not have the right to waive provisions, uh, which obviously people wouldn't want anyway, that opens us up to the liability. It won't be something that would be, uh, not necessarily, uh, up to the task. So, um, that's pretty much my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions. If I do quickly, building inspectors tend to get a little building inspectory when it comes to building code. Uh, so if there's anything that needs further explanation, I'm happy to do so.
Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Is there any other public comment?
Can I make another comment?
Again.
The beam on the front and also where it connects to the existing building has been ledgered. On the back, where he's concerned with the ledgering, that's been performed, okay? Uh, I asked him what other things that I needed to address, and he refused to acknowledge anything other than everything, he said everything's wrong. I says, well, can you be more specific? And at that point, I was very polite with him, and he just says, no, I don't need to do any of that, and he, yeah, okay. So then he's talking about the, the front beam does not meet the, the building code standards. Well, it's triple M made, so if I have to go get my contractor from Vegas, who has an engineer to sign that off, I, that's fine. So I still don't understand why it needs to be removed. And that's the whole concern here. I'm not, I'm not trying to keep it the way it is, if it's a danger, and it's proven to be a danger. I'm just asking that if the order for it to be removed, be revoked until I can address all of the issues. Especially right now with the temperatures, you can't even pour concrete down below the cross line because it won't cure up beyond there. It just won't.
All right, I'm happy to speak to that.
Okay. Then I have a question.
Sure. Uh, and the reason I didn't provide a comprehensive list at this inspection was because in order to make this code compliant, not only would the building, uh, either have to be widened, uh, or we would have to undermine the entire building in order to install proper, uh, frost protection underneath the footings essentially. There's really no workmanlike way that that could be accomplished, uh, many meaningful, safe way that, that maintains the integrity of the structure. So, uh, yeah, I couldn't provide a list of corrections if I couldn't, um, offer a solution to those corrections, which is essentially why I didn't offer a list, because, um, I just, I couldn't prove what was there. And, um, you know, in my experience, I, I just didn't see that there was a positive way to make the, the proper corrections, and he took the point, so.
I have a question, um, I feel good about, um, what you have said, but I just want to go back to the very first one. The very first thing was you talked about a homeowner needing to?
Correct, so the owner builder exemption in state law means that a homeowner can work on his own property, uh, so long as he lives there, resides there, and is not going to put it up for sale or lease for an entire year. Um, so, but you have to be the owner of the property in order to grant that exception in order to be able to build on the property. Otherwise, a license contractor is required.
So he is not the?
May we close this item, if we're getting into questions?
Special discussion.
Close this item and we'll open, I mean.
Is there any further discussion before we close that? Okay. So now we can go into number eight. All right. Um, discussion for possible action, consideration and possible approval of appeal by Mr. Knoll, a state representative, Aaron Knoll, regarding building code violation at 736 Avenue G, Elite Nevada. So now, okay, so once again, I'm saying it, it specifically says he must be the homeowner.
Correct.
And he's not the homeowner.
Correct.
Okay. So, and that is something that can be done with no exception?
Correct.
The homeowner is not here?
Somebody can apply to the state board of contractors for a specific exception if they would like. And then I would be obligated to honor that, that exception at the state board of contractors.
Okay, so, um, so he can't do that, is he aware that he can do that and jump through those hoops?
I believe he is aware now.
Okay. All right, are there some other questions?
My, my comment I had is I, number one, is he's not the property owner, I think that's important. And I don't even rank these in order, but I think number four would be ranked right at the top also. Any building without a good foundation isn't worth nothing. And we do know that, you know, frost levels down a minimum of three feet around here, and even been known to, while I worked at the line, down to four feet. So how can you do anything on a building with the foundation not even correct?
And that's, that's why I didn't offer any corrections at that time, I just didn't see a feasible way. And I used to be a bricklayer before I learned how to read and write, became an inspector. Um, you know, I didn't see any feasible way that that could be applied in an appropriate manner, so. Uh, that was, again, the reason that I didn't offer any correction lists.
May, may I ask one more question? And then you did talk about some things that if we would approve, we would be out of compliance, definitely according to code and laws and be liable as?
Well, it is potentially sure, so, um, if we approve something or waived, uh, code, certain code requirements, then, you know, we're saying that they don't matter, you know, without any sort of actual research or, um, you know, any foundational aspect to back that up. Um, you know, I, I'm sympathetic to, you know, a lot of people's situations. Um, hardships are something that we try to work around with folks, but, uh, existing driveways, you know, don't equal hardship as far as the building code is concerned. Um, they can be easily removed as they can be applied in order to, you know, appropriately put in proper foundations. But again, that kind of has to take place at the beginning of the project. Uh, theoretically, it may be possible, but, um, but I've never seen it before and I've seen a lot of things.
And I did understand you to say that there are a couple of things that you could work with and on.
As, as far as the structure itself, um, it would, again, it's the only way that it would be approvable through the building code is if an engineer specifically approved what was precisely there. Um, you know, we call it, we call it stamping your way out of a problem in the industry. Um, and I've, I've kind of been part of a, a number of those projects. Again, part of the reason I didn't offer a correction list was because, um, I don't see a matter in which an engineer, uh, would approve this structure as is and/or, uh, offer any, any substantial corrections. Um, but if they did, we're certainly willing to look at their engineering.
May I ask another question? Um, so, am I to understand that, um, he didn't have an understanding of all of these things, but now does have an understanding of these things? And, or that the, the situation was intense that you were not able to go over all of these issues?
Correct, we, we didn't, we didn't have a thorough discussion on, um, all of the, the issues with the project, um, at all. So, uh, there was, it was a limited amount of time I was there for. So there was, it was a limited amount of time. I was there for about two minutes, at which time Mr. Knoll withdrew his consent to search. Essentially, he invited me in at the beginning of the project and then requested that I be back when the discussions began. In this case, I did. A photo that was part of the pack I just taken after I had withdrawn, and I was outside of the curfew to the home, so.
And may, may I also understand that Mr. Knoll saying he would like to talk to you again and go over these things again, one by one, that you would certainly do that?
Sure. I don't bring my personal feelings to work. I just ask that all of our interactions be respectful as they can.
All right. Any other questions?
We'll just have the statistics.